Yes, so it sounds like there's another Zoom link and that the Commissioner and Chirica Forey and others are on this other link. So Kealan, I don't, I don't know if you could maybe help assist us so that that group gets relocated here or?
Yeah, of course. Um, let me, let me resend the link for this meeting.
Thank you. The Commissioner is letting the group know that Kealan is going to be sending out a link so to rejoin for this, this one.
Great. And Carly, if you don't mind, let me go ahead and just give a little bit of an introduction. Just, I was going to say this later, but I'll do it now to save time. I want to thank everybody for making time for this conversation. This is an opportunity for us to learn more about the evidence-based holistic approach communities are beginning to adopt in fighting against gun violence. This is the model our Office of Violence Prevention brings to the work here in Portland, and I'm grateful to my colleagues, community leaders, and other partners for their support of this strategy. The trajectory of increased gun violence in our region began back in 2019, and it obviously continues through today. Last year, there were almost 900 shootings in Portland, close to 200 people were hurt, and 41 people were shot to death. Fully half the people killed were black. And I'm telling you these statistics because you probably don't know them, but it's clear that the tragedy and the trauma of this violence in our community has been consistently underreported. As in other major cities around the country, the social, financial, physical, and mental health and other stresses of the pandemic have helped to fuel this increase. The pandemic shattered our country's safety net, and our systems haven't been able to protect vulnerable communities from the many dangers that we're seeing here in 2020 and 2021. Locally, we're managing a number of layered, complex challenges ranging from housing instability to food insecurity to widespread gun violence. We're finding that these problems require new tools and new resources. And in response to the rise in gun violence in the metro area, the city has taken a number of steps. We've expanded our Office of Violence Prevention, though it is still much smaller than offices in other cities. We've increased the city's investigative capacity by dedicating employees to gun violence response and standing up of a 24/7 on-call team of investigators.
Twitch.
We're exploring options to increase outreach and hospital-based care that community partners provide. And we participate in weekly coordinating conversations convened by IPAC, the Your Faith, Peace, and Action Collaborative, and Lipsec, the Local Public Safety Coordinating Council, and others. This table brings together public health, faith, social services, law enforcement, and elected leaders to collaborate and share information. We're working with the city's emergency manager to consider options for central coordination of city tools. We're taking our federal partner, talking to our federal partners, and bringing more investigative expertise and resources to the table. And we're looking at operational strategies to bring law enforcement presence to high-risk places at high-risk times. And of course, we continue to work with the California Partnership for Safe Communities, a group of national experts working with cities to reduce violence through systemic and institutional changes that strengthen community police relations and reduce over incarceration. And lastly, I'm excited to share that last week, OVP launched Portland's Restoration Academy, a work experience program that helps recently incarcerated people reenter their communities with hope and with support to be successful. So again, thank you all for investing your time in this urgent conversation and for your partnership in building and implementing solutions.
Twitch. KBOI48 says, fuck Ted Wheeler.
Commissioner on board with this now.
I just saw Kealan just sent out the link.
Perfect. Good. I was going to work all of that into our discussion, but I thought just in the interest in being efficient, saving time, I just put it all out there upfront.
I'm just pulling up the agenda, Mayor.
I'll bring back the fart sound emotes next time. Sounds better than his line voice.
Yes, my apologies, all. I was wondering why you all were so late. We, nine of us were over on another link. But we're coming in now. My apologies, Mayor.
No problems. Good to have you here. Turn it over to you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you all for participating today. As you know, this is the fourth meeting that we've had with Dr. Jonathan Jay to really help us all reimagine what community safety looks like. And it is, I'm thrilled to have so many of you here today and to have this be part of a work session so that both we can record it and that the public will have an opportunity to weigh in and see the work that we've been involved in. I want to, so again, thank you so much for being here. And we've added new people to this conversation because for me, it was important that we invite the county sheriff, that we invite our police chief, so that it is an open conversation about where we as a community are headed. Dr. Jonathan Jay is a professor at Boston University. He is expert at looking at how violence impacts communities and how you can identify community solutions to an increase in community violence. And he's just been a wonderful person to work with. And so I am going to turn it over to you, Dr. Jay, since we are 10 minutes behind. Did it no fault of your own? And let's get this program started. Welcome, Dr. Jay.
Thanks so much, Commissioner. I think I can, I can go fast and get us back on time. It is always an honor to be with you on these calls. I am here in Boston. I, my in-laws live in Clackamas County, so we have an ongoing conversation about whose winter weather is worse. So I want you to know that my arguments are finely honed on this point. But I will share my screen here, and we'll talk about reimagining community safety from a public health perspective. And since this is now the fourth session, which some of you have joined for me, we'll be talking about new material today. It will touch back on all of the conversations we've had about community-based solutions to gun violence. But today, we will be covering analyses, focus on what happened in 2020. So where has gun violence changed? Who's felt the effects? And then we'll look at promising practices, sort of dividing those between the categories of what community members can do, given the right levels of resources and capacity, and how local governments can hold themselves accountable and position community members to hold them accountable. So this will touch back on some of the conversations we've had in the past, but this is, these are all new slides. So here's where things changed in 2020. They changed for the worse in almost every US city. So looking across the 50 biggest, most populous cities in the US, we end up seeing an increase in gun fatalities in 2020 around between 30 and 45%, depending on the data source you use, the cities you include, how you calculate it. And over the course of the year of 2020, Portland starts lower, has one big discontinuity from April to May, so a big spike early in the COVID pandemic, and a second one in the middle of the summer. This is just from looking at raw trends. So we see these two big breaks that are reasonably consistent with the patterns that we see in other US cities. Portland did not have the worst increase in fatal gun violence in 2020. These are the, this is Portland compared to the 11 big cities that had high baseline rates and had larger increases, including the city of Boston where I am. But this is a very, this is a very serious increase. The, we don't have the official final statistics yet, but the understanding is that the increase from 2019 to 2020 will be the biggest single-year increase in gun violence on record. And Mayor Wheeler started the session by talking about some of the reasons for that associated with economic distress and trauma associated with the COVID pandemic. An analysis that actually came out this morning looked at the proposition that changes in policing may have contributed to the gun violence spike. And so these researchers looked at data from New York City, looking at these proactive police activities, specifically here, drug arrests. And what they showed was a steady decrease in those activities over time, where that decrease was not associated with changes in shootings from 2010 through 2019. And then we see a gun violence spike in New York City in 2020. And these kinds of analyses tend to suggest that while there may have been changes in how police operated in 2020 across US cities, it's unlikely that those kinds of changes in proactive policing are the cause of the gun violence spike that we saw. Here's one way that I would propose thinking about it. And so what you're seeing first at the lower levels are fatal shootings per capita in US cities in 2019. And then you see them rise in 2020. And here, I've lined up the 100 biggest US cities according to where they fall on an indicator called the Index of Concentration of the Extremes. So this assigns cities a position based on the proportion of their population that is most deprived versus has the most, the most privileged social position. So at the far end on the left are going to be populations with the largest proportion of the population is black or African-American and very low income, so incomes below $25,000 per year for household. And on the far right population, the largest proportion of the population is white and affluent with household incomes of $100,000 a year or more. And we can see that Portland is one of the bigger cities with the highest levels of privilege on this indicator. And one thing, as we see how things change from 2019 to 2020, we see that this dimension of deprivation to privilege structures the change in 2020. Apologies to anyone who like me is sort of prone to motion sickness. Don't stare at this for too long. But you do see the, the slope goes with levels of deprivation. And, and so rising deprivation across the board, across all US cities, would predict this exponential increase in gun violence, because that's the baseline association. So who felt the effects? Actually, I got something to show you that we've been working on in my lab at BU. I think I'll have to stop sharing for a second in order to send a link. So I'm putting a link in the chat here. So you all can look at this yourselves. And I'll go back to the slide. This is what's called a racial dot map. And so it assigns a colored dot to people based on their identities. In this case, we're looking at children ages five to 17 across Multnomah County. And what you see in the background are darker areas shaded according to the number of gun homicides in 2020. And so if you're in this app, you can scroll around, and you can see at the neighborhood level how exposure to gun violence, to a gun homicide in your neighborhood, in your census tract, maps onto a child's race or ethnicity. And for those of you who are in the app, I'm going to give you a second to scroll on before moving forward. But this is, this is one of the ways of visualizing residential racial segregation that we find most visually understandable. So we see high concentrations of residents of color in parts of East Portland, parts of Gresham, where we also see higher rates of gun violence. And I know this is generally no surprise to any of you, but this is a, this is one way of interacting with those data. And if you calculate it like this, what you see is that residents of color, children of color in particular, are much more likely than white children to have, to live in a census tract with at least one gun homicide in Multnomah County. And it's true that census tracts don't necessarily map onto people's perception of their own neighborhood, but we do have research on how, for example, children who live in a census, who have had a homicide in their census tract in the past week, perform worse on standardized tests than when there hasn't been, than when that homicide hasn't occurred. So that is at least a proxy for an indicator of, of neighborhood. So going to promising practices, one thing that we've talked a lot about interventions that are community-based in the sense of being focused on a small spatial level or engaging with community, involving community-based organizations in various ways. But here, I want to talk specifically about community mobilization and capacity in particular. So we'll talk a little bit about Baltimore ceasefire. Don't get distracted by the names. So the, the term ceasefire has been applied to many different gun violence prevention strategies, organizations, approaches. This Baltimore's ceasefire 365 organization is the leading proponent of the, the approach that you're going to hear about. And don't, don't, don't conflate it with other, other strategies with ceasefire in the title. So this is Erica Bridgford. I'm going to show you a little bit of a TED Talk that she gave. And where we're picking up in this talk is where she's talking about the first time that this organization started to organize a weekend. This is, this is their main intervention, is organizing community members for weekends, three-day weekends, where everyone's going to come out in agreement for there to be no shootings. No shootings this weekend.
I don't think we have sound, Dr. Jay.
Thank you for telling me that.
You're welcome.
You might have to unplug your headphones.
Ah.
That'll do it.
I was hearing it very, very clearly. Thank you so much. Tell me if you got enough.
First release. And the media told us, this is not really a story yet. We will get with you on August 7th to see how the ceasefire went. So we went, oh, all right then. And Baltimore got to work. And not only did people send money to the PayPal account so we could buy flyers and posters, people came and got the flyers and posters, and they put them all around the city. And people were having conversations with each other. What kind of resources do you need? What are you going through? What has happened to you? Because we understand the root causes of violence in this country. People who said it wouldn't work still ended their sentence with, but please keep trying. Somebody needs to do something anyway. Teenagers who would tell us about the stuff they were doing in the streets all day asked, but can I have a poster to put it on my wall at night so I can see it on my way to bed? Geistess. Well, Colin said, I can tell you where violence is not going to come from because we're committing to the peace challenge. And they kept their word. When people said, oh, it's not going to work because somebody's going to kill over west, or somebody's going to kill over east, we said that doesn't matter. It's about self-determination, yo. You telling me you can't keep this three or six block radius safe? And they would say, oh, don't get it twisted. It's going to stay safe around here. And they kept that promise. Four songs. And I know it looks like I'm holding up five fingers, but I have four fingers, so this is four for me. Four songs got made about the Baltimore ceasefire. And the one that most exemplifies it, where a bunch of artists came together and made a song, that one is currently nominated for a Grammy out here, right? And so now what was happening was from the most beautiful corners of crack houses to the grimiest corners of politicians' offices, everybody was talking about this thing Baltimore was doing together, right? And then the weekend came. Events all over the city. People yelling, happy ceasefire day. Over 200 people got their records expunged and got jobs. And people went into drug recovery programs because of what was happening in our city that weekend. People were going, but the air feels different in Baltimore. Nobody's mother got that phone call last night. I didn't hear any gunshots. And on Saturday, Trey went to go get a job and was excited about it. At 24 hours of no killing, we were singing Kendrick Lamar. We gonna be all right. We gonna be all right. And then at 4:59 on Saturday, we get a message that somebody was killed. We didn't know his name, but it turned out to be Trey. So we rushed over to Sargent Street, and we held hands in a circle, and we looked at the pavement, and we said, this is sacred ground because we make it so. Because everywhere in our city where people lose their lives to violence needs to be sacred ground. And it wasn't just about upholding Trey and his transition and sending love to his family. It was about us pausing to really think about what must it feel like 20 minutes after you kill somebody? Can we pour love into that? Because until we do, we will not heal this epidemic. Later on in the day, we get another call. Dante is murdered. So by the end of this day, we were shook. In real life, we were shook because we had opened up our hearts together and changed the atmosphere of this city. And now our hearts were broken together. And we had to be honest about the fact that last weekend, when we lost six people to violence, it didn't feel the way it felt this weekend when we lost these two, because now we were paying attention. Now we were all hoping together that nobody got killed. And so we had to make a vow with ourselves not to be numb anymore. When we lose people in our city, these two lives were going to remind us to vibrate higher and to move forward. So as we move forward into Baltimore ceasefire 365, because there's work that needs to be done all year. And there's another ceasefire happening next weekend, November 3rd through 5th. Mark your calendar, right? And we expect the same thing. It was news media from all around the world, Australia, and Norway, and China. Everybody wanted to come get this work from Baltimore, and y'all can come get it, right? So as we push forward, we don't need to keep asking now, what can we do? We have seen the power of collective consciousness. Y'all were the ones who misunderstood Baltimore. Y'all thought Baltimore was just the wire. When we lost Freddie Gray, y'all saw the Baltimore uprising, and people around this world mischaracterized it and misunderstood it. What you failed to realize is Baltimore is the power to rise up. And that is what we continue to do.
So you all have heard a lot from me about community-based interventions. And I'm glad you got to hear from, from Erica about how this one has worked in Baltimore. She's the founder of this organization, and they continue to be a strong presence in the city of Baltimore. And in a very strong quasi-experimental design, researchers found that ceasefire weekends were associated with a 52% reduction in gun violence from 2017 to 2019. That's a huge intervention effect. This is using a, a strong design published in our flagship journal. So this doesn't just sound good, right? This, the, the science bears out this, that this works. And in 2020, when we saw that so many big US cities had substantial gun violence increases, we see that Baltimore had an initial rise, April to May, like Portland, and then stays steady for the rest of the year, goes back to normal levels, which are still too high, still one of the highest per capita gun homicide rates in the US. But we might speculate that this kind of community capacity can buffer against the effects of all of those forces that Mayor Wheeler mentioned at the beginning. So getting the right people to the table is part of the solution. And part of the solution is, is their ability to run with community-based gun violence prevention. The last piece that I want to talk about is public accountability and data. This is Mayor Bowser from Washington, DC. And you may all have heard that they have, they're unpacking a new gun violence prevention strategy citywide in Washington, DC. This brings us back to some of the themes that we talked about in past sessions on how gun violence prevention interventions can focus on people. So we know that there's people with trauma histories who, and possible criminal justice involvement, who are identifiable as the highest-risk individuals to be involved in gun violence as either victims or perpetrators. So they're doing a people-based strategy. But it is spatially concentrated. So they've picked out a set of high-risk blocks in the city that they believe account for a substantial proportion of gun violence incidents citywide. And they use crime data to identify this. We can talk about that in more detail, but sort of what's the most suitable way to find, to spatially focus these interventions. But it's sort of this classic people and places focus. And administratively, they established a Director of Violence Prevention position, the counterpart to Director Green's position. They issued a state of emergency order, the public policy intervention that we're more familiar with from local COVID response. The state of emergency allows them to allocate more money in the coming fiscal year, $15 million to gun violence prevention. They established an emergency operations center, and they're building a data dashboard. This is kind of, this is, they don't present this as essential to what they're doing, but they don't present this essential to what they're doing, but I want to talk about this as one way to get started on the local government side. And the way they talked about is they're going to say, they said, well, we've got these data trackers from COVID-19 and we're going to do something around gun violence accountability based on what we learned from these trackers. And that for me tapped into something that I had been thinking about throughout 2020, which is what we saw during COVID was that when there's really widespread attention to a public health crisis, there is the demand for data. Availability of local data that reaches the point where governments across the board are responding one way or another. And so why, why doesn't every local government do that for gun violence too? At least every local government where community members consider gun violence to be a problem. So this is the DC COVID tracker. There is a lot here. I actually like the Multnomah County version a little better. It's, I find it a lot easier to navigate. But you all have experience of deploying your own data around a public health crisis. There are already cities that have gun violence dashboards that make their gun violence data public. So everything that I showed you earlier was based on data from the Gun Violence Archive. This is a nonpartisan nonprofit organization that scrapes news accounts for data on gun violence incidents. And it's quite good considering that's not official, but it's not official. And so some cities like Philadelphia, Rochester, and others have for years been making their gun violence very granular, geo-coded incident level data public. But that is not the standard practice across cities. So in Philadelphia, this is a website that was not generated by the city government, but by a independent group using the official data that the city of Philadelphia makes available through its open data portal. Here is a comparable dashboard for the city of Pittsburgh. And one thing you notice in these dashboards is, for example, the, the distinction between aggravated assaults with a firearm and a non-fatal shooting. So I guess that distinguishes between whether there's, someone has a gun when they commit an aggravated assault versus whether they use the gun to commit aggravated assault. That's kind of, I, those are distinctions that may matter for charging decisions, like criminal justice decisions. But I don't know how much that distinction matters for a community member who's worried about getting hurt in their neighborhood. So this is very crime focused and it tends to, and you know, sort of you, if you look across the board, what you see is, you know, we hear about how in 2020, data show that, well, crimes changed. Certain kinds of robberies went down while gun violence went up. That kind of assumes that the causal structure between, I mean, it demonstrates that the causal structure isn't the same between certain kinds of acts that we call crimes and certain kinds of other acts that we call crimes. But there's no reason to think that that's how we should think about gun violence as opposed to thinking that as having similar underlying drivers to overdoses, suicides, other health events. When we think about a public health approach, we may think about gun violence as being a public health outcome like other public health outcomes. So one place that has done this using public health data is Cook County, Illinois, where Chicago is located. They've been publishing tons of death records for many years. So sort of all of the concerns that you might imagine or that we might hear about how hard it is or how the sort of legal barriers or the hurdles to releasing data, they seem not to have been a big problem for Cook County, Illinois. It's, it's really quite granular, surprisingly granular. And this is, you know, the medical examiner's office is a whole separate office. So we don't, you know, city of Chicago, Chicago Police Department is fairly good on its sort of open data releases, but this is a whole separate thing. And what we can see is, for example, on this dashboard, you have tabs for opioid overdoses, gun-related injuries and heat injuries. And these are those, if you're sort of, if you, if you study public health, one of the first things you learn in urban health is, you know, all of these health issues are going to map onto each other spatially in similar ways, right? Maternal mortality, low birth weight, gun violence, heat deaths. They're all, those, they're going to show similar patterns in ways that crime data may or may not. And here you see the same dashboard for suicides, gun suicides and gun homicides. Right there, show, they are mapping incidences of gun homicide and gun suicide. And we can see other patterns across Cook County. So counties are doing this. So thinking ahead to what Multnomah County, city of Portland, the other cities that are on here could do, I would encourage you to think about what are the measurable goals of your gun violence work? Maybe you start this website before, before you know what the, what the whole plan county-wide looks like. Hold yourself to it first. And then decide how, decide what's going to take to get to your targets. And so one, one layer of this is the accountability, holding yourself, making commitments and tracking your progress and, and being accountable to community members for whether you made the progress or you didn't. And then the second is maybe you can make a dashboard that's actually helpful to your programs and to your community partners' programs. It doesn't exclusively have to be a sort of performance management tool. It could be a real operational tool. So in my lab at BU, we're working on sort of standardized tools that might be useful across jurisdictions that people could log into. A little bit like the one that I gave you the link to earlier. But of course, the best tools are going to be the ones that you customize locally and that are designed for, for your own needs. So we talked about these big increases across US cities. We talked about how it's structured by these patterns of racialized deprivation and privilege. And we talked about community capacity is buffering against those big surges while also holding yourself to account using data at the local government level. Let me turn it back over to you, Commissioner.
Thank you so much. I could have watched the rest of that TED Talk if, if we had more time this morning. I think it's a good time to stop and see if there are any questions that have been generated by your presentation first. If people will use their hand raised tool, I will be happy to take your questions. Not seeing any hands up at this moment. Oh, I'm sorry, Sharon. I didn't see you over in the corner, Commissioner Sharon. Commissioner Marin, please.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Hardisty. And also, John, that this presentation was fascinating. I agree about the, the TED Talk. I just, I'd raise this in the chat and I appreciate your response, Commissioner Hardisty. But you know, as we're talking about data collection and sort of the public health framework and all of this within the context of public health, just ensuring that public health is involved in the conversation. I was just going through the people on this call and it, public health is not, is not included. So if they're collecting the data, et cetera, just would want to ensure they're involved.
Thank you for that, Commissioner. I will say that Abby's on this call and I know that the new work that the Lip Sync is about to take on, the Local Public Safety Coordinating Council does have the public health at the table. And so I think that Dr. J has given us really a roadmap for how we will do that work with Lip Sync. Am I accurate with that, Chair Kafari? Her head's going up and down for those who are maybe on the phone.
Who, who can't figure out where the mute button is. It's in a different place in every single platform, which makes it challenging for us elders. Yes, you are correct, Commissioner Hardisty.
Yeah. So I am, this is perfect timing in my mind for, as we start that work and we'll hear from Abby a little later about what that's going to look like. As we start reimagining, right, what our justice system looks like in Multnomah County. I think Dr. J has given us an excellent roadmap to really start thinking about how we both decide what the, what we're measuring and how we're going to know when we're successful in that effort. So I, I, this is really, the timing is so impeccable, Dr. J. I thank you for that. I think one of the things that, as soon as I saw, let me just say, as soon as I saw ceasefire, I had a visceral reaction because that program has been utilized, the name has been utilized in programs that have been really law enforcement focused. And so I'm, I was really happy to hear that this ceasefire was not that ceasefire, that this was a community-driven initiative. And for me, I have, I do have a question about that particular program. What was the catalyst to bring community together to create these weekends that would be gun violence-free?
That's a great question, Commissioner. I, I have to admit that I, I watched the second half of the, of the TED Talk so many times to get the right cues that I didn't, I didn't absorb the very beginning of the story that well.
Okay, don't worry. I, I will, I'll do my own investigation later because I do think it matters who the convener is, right? That matters a lot. And clearly it was not a government convening, right? This was community stepping up in a way that they had decided they had had enough is, is what I'm taking from that. But I will watch the rest of the video. Any additional?
I think that's exactly right.
Any additional questions before we move forward? Seeing none. So the next part of our agenda is really to, I, I guess for me, I want to get some, I want to get some of your initial take. I heard a couple of things from Dr. J. One is that there was actually a state of emergency declared. And with the state of emergency that allowed the, the communities that were presented to be able to do some additional things. Any thoughts on that, either from the county or the city? I know it's Monday and people may not have had enough coffee yet to be absorbing this, but one of the things that I, that I thought about is what, what are the components that come into play? When we declare a state of emergency? And if we're looking at it from a public health perspective, I would imagine that that would be a county initiative because of course our public health and Multnomah County is affiliated with Multnomah County. Mayor, do you want to weigh in?
Yeah, I do actually. Thank, thank you. And I've been, you, you all hear from me a lot on these subjects. And I was killing little time early on, Commissioner, when we had some confusion about the link by just sort of reiterating some of the work that we're doing, both through the Office of Violence Prevention, as well as some of the work that law enforcement is engaged in. There, there is a critically important aspect of an emergency declaration that we are investigating and that's coordination. And one of the conversations that we've been having is around a unified command center and actually coordinating through an ECC, the city, the county organizations within the community coming together in a coordinated approach on an ongoing basis and sharing the same data, the same information in real time and coordinating that response. And we're still working on those details, of course, but any sort of structure like that would absolutely acknowledge what we as a city council have already acknowledged, which is that this is a public health emergency that we're discussing and it needs to be addressed very similarly to COVID-19 or any other pandemic where there's a virus that can potentially spread. That's the negative side. The positive side, of course, that means we can prevent it. We can intervene and we can stop it. And so that, that is one part of the approach that I'm working on with city leadership. And we'll have more to say on that in the coming days as we evaluate whether or not that is a useful tool or not a useful tool. Obviously the county would be heavily engaged in that conversation. In fact, I believe they already are.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Stegman.
Thank you, Commissioner Hardisty. Well, I think it's really important for us to work together jurisdictionally. And me, you know, a state of emergency might be the way to go, but I guess I'm frustrated because like if you take the Rosewood neighborhood, you know, Joey and 162nd, you know, on one side of the street, it's city of Portland. The other side, it's Gresham. And back in the day, we had Portland police, individuals who recognized that issue and that problem, and they tried to address it. Those folks have since moved on. But, so we didn't build a system. We had a system that was based on individuals who have since gone to other places. And you know, well, yes, I think we need to collaborate on a larger scale. There were things that we could be doing right now and we're not. And I, I'm not really sure. I know we've got, you know, Portland police on Multnomah County, but I would just throw out there, why can't we reinstitute something similar? Because I think geographically, if you look at the gun violence, it's happening a lot in that particular neighborhood. And right now, nobody is taking responsibility as much as I would like to see them. It's just like nobody, like, we don't even know, am I, am I in Gresham? Am I in Portland? Much less who has jurisdiction? So I think that there are internal things that we could do now. I think there are baby steps and we've got to get that infrastructure built up. And while these other things might seem really great, there, I mean, there's things that we can do now. And that's what I would implore this group to look at.
Thank you, Commissioner. I certainly don't disagree with you that there are things that we can do now. And you're absolutely right. We do have Counselor Vince Jones Dixon on this call. I invited him because of the reason that you described, right? Depending upon what side of the street you're standing on, it's either Gresham or Portland. And we do know that we don't know the law enforcement, how law enforcement responds, right? Or which entity responds in those cases. So you are absolutely right. I, I don't want to lose the thread around, if we're going to address this as a public, as a, as a public health issue, then the tools that we would put in place would be different than if we were addressing this as a strictly law enforcement issue, right? And so I, I want to make sure that we're clear. Yes, law enforcement has a role in this effort, but they are not the leaders in this effort, right? They cannot be the leaders in this effort. And we have to interrupt how we normally respond to these kind of activities without assuming that there's one group that has the expertise. I, I would actually say that the expertise lies in our community and how we resolve gun violence. It does not lie in the police department, right? They have a role, but they're not, they, they've had tradition in oversized role. But, but if we're going to actually put something in place from a public health perspective, it's a lot different than what we've traditionally done. Doesn't mean that police should not do their job today and solve gun violence, right? They, that, that's what they're supposed to do. And they have the tools to do that today, I believe. That's just my personal opinion. But thank you for that, Commissioner. I'm going to go to Commissioner Vega Peterson next and then Commissioner Rubio. And then we'll go back to the agenda if there are no more pressing questions. Commissioner Vega Peterson.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I just appreciate your comments so much. And, and Dr. J, I appreciate your, all of the information that you have to share with us. I think for me, the thing that struck me the most, a couple of things that struck me the most in the presentation is one, just the fact of, you know, the, the TED Talk and all of that was come, was community-driven, right? It was community-driven. There was like authentic leaders, authentic messengers that I think were able to get the results that I think most of the people on this call wouldn't be able to get. And I think that's a really important thing that we need to understand as we're thinking about strategies for moving forward on how to approach this. I also, the, and so, you know, and I'm, and I think we need, we all need to, you know, recognize that, you know, in terms of what our role and how we can really help this process along in the best way. The other thing that really struck me was the, was the map of Multnomah County showing where there were the most gun homicides in 2020 and then the overlay with the children and the impact on the children for that. I mean, I'm just looking at that. and the impact on the children for that. I mean, a lot, I'm just looking at that and there, the intensity of both the dots and numbers of children and the gray showing the homicides are so, just so strong in my district and especially in my district east of, um, 82nd Avenue. And I think that, um, Dr. J, your comment on the fact that, you know, children who have experienced, uh, you know, gun violence in their neighborhoods, who have had a shooting in their neighborhoods are doing less well on standardized tests, right? That's just one data point, but I think we know that on top of all the stress that our children are experiencing with COVID, with distance learning, children being at home more and being in that environment more. Right? This is something that, again, I think that we need to expand our conversation, not just as Commissioner Myron was talking about public health, who needs to be a partner in this work, but our school districts. Um, and our community organizations, right, have to be, um, really key partners in this work. So, um, I, I'm, I love these meetings. I think it's great that we have some leadership. But as we're thinking about next steps, I wanna really think about how we can, how we can bring the right people in and have the conversations in these areas that are most impacted. To make sure that we're putting solutions in place and, and attempting things that'll make that difference. And then I think the final thing, um, Commissioner Hardisty is just about that declaring a state of emergency. I'm open to that. I just wanna know, what does that mean? Like, what are those resources? What exactly, you know, it's great to call a state of emergency, but really, what does that actually do? And allow us to do that's different than what we could do today?
Thank you so much, Commissioner. And let me just say, just because we say that it's a public health emergency, we have to make sure our actions actually are based on best science around public health, right? You know, cuz we are good at changing language, but we're not good at changing how we respond, right? So it's really, I, I appreciate, uh, the new language around this is a public health issue. But if we don't act like it's a public health issue, we will continue to use the tools that we've always used. So thank you for that. I appreciate that. Commissioner Rubio.
Thank you, Commissioner Hardisty, for bringing this work session forward, and thank you, uh, uh, also to Dr. J. This, uh, data is really compelling. I also wanna just echo what other folks have said that city county collaboration in, on this issue in particular, both vertically and horizontally, horizontally is essential for us to addressing this in a collaborative way. We each have strengths and responsibilities and accountability to bring to bear, but we have to be collaboratively addressing them. Um, I also just wanna, um, you know, impress upon all of us and remind us all how critical it is for any successful project or endeavor that we have the engagement of impacted communities at the center and the planning stages. So I, I appreciate that we're having this conversation and we need to be having this conversation with people who have long been doing this work and with trusted, um, uh, community-based organizations and impacted community members. It's the way that we're gonna build a really respectful and responsive strategies that's actually going to be effective. It, it doesn't, we could do all the planning in the world, but if we don't have the wisdom and engagement of those impacted communities, it is, you know, we're not gonna be effective. So, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate those comments quite a bit. Any other pressing questions before we move forward? Not seeing any. Um, so Dr. J, our plan is to actually, uh, do this community safety poll. Uh, Dr. J came up with some questions. And what we realized is that the city doesn't actually have a poll function on our Zoom account. And so I think we're gonna do it an old-fashioned way. What, uh, what I'm gonna do is ask people to use their raise hand function if they agree with this statement that is made. And Dr. J, if you could, uh, count the number of hands that are up. I will then move on to the next question. Does that, will that work for you?
Commissioner Hardisty, this is Kealan. We were actually able to get the poll survey, uh, feature turned on if you wanted to try to use that instead.
I don't see it on the bottom of my screen.
Yeah, um, my colleague Christina will be able to run it for you if you want to use it.
Excellent. In that case, we don't have to go old school on this. That would be fabulous. And so we just wanna get a sense from, uh, the governmental entities that are on this call about what, when you think of community safety, um, what does that mean? And so, uh, Kealan, if we could have, uh, someone, um, actually, I don't know how we're gonna do the poll, but if you would have them, uh, release the poll for us, that would be great.
Sure, Christina.
See it on your screen, everyone? Thumbs up if you can see it. You see it? Excellent. And so, uh, what we'd like you to do is to check as many of these boxes as you think apply to the question. When you envision a safe community, what do you see? And am I correct? Uh, there's no limit to the number of boxes people can check, Dr. J?
It looks to me like you can, yeah, you can check as many as you, uh, as you'd like.
Excellent. All right. So let's take a moment, do the survey, and we'll come back and we will, once we get the results, we will tell you what we have found. Is everyone finished? I see heads going up and down. Uh, Kealan, am I gonna be able to get a results of our poll?
Yes, yes. I think we're gonna be able to, to post the results momentarily.
Here we are. Um, I don't know why one, oh, because it's 100%. I was like, why is that red? So, uh, it looks like, uh, 95% of people thought people hanging out on the street makes their community safe. 100% of the people on this call said the shared public infrastructure like benches, parks, and street lamps. 90% of people, social service providers. 35% said well-maintained gates and fencing. 60% said clearly marked bright lanes. Interesting poll. Uh, only 30% thought uniformed police officers talking to residents made the community safe. And no one thought unhoused people in tents made communities safe. See if I'm missing any more questions. 75% of, uh, participants said that hip coffee shops, gyms, and thriving retail businesses make a community safe. And, uh, 60% that people engaged in political speech. It looks like Commissioner Marin was not able to participate. Does anyone else have problems participating in the poll? My apologies to Commissioner Marin for not being able to participate. I found that poll, I, I find his poll very illuminating. Any, any thoughts that people have from just the poll of the folks on this call? Any initial thoughts? Well, let me just say from the poll, I, it, the poll for me reinforces what Dr. J has been saying for us, right? A safe community is a community where people are, uh, moving about, right? People are involved in activities. They are, they are out in public. They're not fearful of being on the street, uh, which, uh, creates more community safety. But I have to tell you, I was, I was shocked by, I, I actually thought more people would think uniformed, uh, Pete, please, uh, police officers engaged in just regular community interaction. I would have actually thought that that would have scored higher on this poll. So that, that struck me as like, wow, that was interesting, even with this group. So, uh, that concludes the poll.
Commissioner Hardisty, if I could just jump in for a second, not to, not to take time away from directly bringing others.
Very interested in what you have to say about this.
I just, um, I think that the, the results are really interesting in exactly the ways that you mentioned. And I'm, I don't, I don't think we have time to discuss this now, but, um, thought that it might be useful for people to reflect on what it felt like to answer these questions. If, if you all don't mind my sort of having done this in professor mode. I thought that it might be a little uncomfortable to choose, uh, what these, uh, to choose any one of these, um, and sort of think through, whether any of these alone capture what community safety feels like to you, or even, uh, even several of them that feel good. Whether it really captures the feeling of community safety for individuals. So that, if, if you had that kind of reaction as you were answering this, that might also be something to, to sort of frame your thoughts as you, as you go forward.
I'm not seeing any hands up at this moment. I will say for me, the, the, the question that, uh, for me, it was the social service providers. And it was the shared public infrastructure, right? Feeling like the, the community belonged to me, right, and belonged to everybody, right? Being, uh, cuz for me, I, I walk my neighborhoods all times of the day and the evening and the night. And have never felt unsafe, even though the public image of the communities I've lived in, since I've lived in Portland, have told me I should feel unsafe in those communities. But I never have, uh, because I've never had any unsafe experiences, right? So that's how it hit me when I was, when I was reading it. Anyone else wanna? Commissioner Jalapau.
Thank you, Commissioner Hardisty. Thank you, uh, Dr. J, for this really, really informative. I've been stuck in frozen laptop land, so I'm sorry I wasn't able to participate earlier. But one of the things that struck me is that the, the items on the survey that had the most responses, people on the streets, thriving retail businesses, shared infrastructure. Those are precisely the sorts of elements that we've had trouble maintaining in large part because of COVID. So one of the things that struck me was the connection between the things that people feel make neighborhoods feel safe and the pandemic that we've been experiencing. And the, the other thing in response to your question, Dr. J, about, um, does this capture everything? I really, I did find myself thinking about that and saying it captures it for me. But would it capture it for the folks who are experiencing violence right now? So, you know, to a point that Commissioner Vega Peterson made earlier about the necessity of hearing from community and folks who are experiencing violence. I really, I, I wonder what, whether the items on this list would speak to what makes community feel safe for the people who are actually experiencing violence.
What a great, what a great, um, um, analysis of that. And I, 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 I think you're right. I think, I, I would like to know the answer to that question, too. If the, if the poll would have come out the same way, if we were, uh, talking to people who are living in communities who are experiencing violence on a regular basis. I, I think that is an excellent question. Chair Cofory.
Thank you, and I, um, thank you, Commissioner Jalapau, for that. I, I, um, I think a lot about the relationship between the, the current heightened violence and, and the COVID pandemic. And there's, it's, it's, it's on so many different levels. I think a lot of people think of the COVID pandemic has created this, you know, heightened sense of, um, of mental health issues. But it's not just that. It is actually what, what we've been talking about. It's, it is that partially, but it's also people not being out in community. It's the inability to have this, you know, the church, the community fit, whatever forums where people come together, and I think that's been really hard. And it's also made our work harder. A lot of the, um, tried and true, um, programs that we have are not able, you know, to be as effective when you're calling someone on the phone to check in on them. It's much different. And for some people, it's working out okay, but for a lot of people, they need that huge person-to-person contact. So there's just so many ways in which the pandemic has, um, changed our community right now and not for the better.
Absolutely true. And I, I would add one more piece on that. The, uh, racial justice movement that started last year, didn't actually uncover any new information. However, what it did was just really put the inequities that are already built into our systems into the public, uh, light, right? And whether it's the pandemic and who's most impacted by the pandemic, or whether it's, uh, who's most impacted by our high unemployment due to the pandemic. How many people are insecure in their housing and food insecure, right? All of those issues, uh, have actually disconnected, uh, us from community, right? Cuz we have been, uh, working in isolation and we have not been able to, to really be engaged in community efforts. So I, I agree 100% with that analysis. I'm, I am mindful of the time that we're under, and I wanna move us to the next, uh, uh, part of our agenda unless there's a pressing question that, uh, someone has. Commissioner Jalapau, your hand is still up. I don't know if it's leftover or if you got a new question. Okay.
It's leftover. Sorry about.
Okay, no worry. Um, so now what I'd like to do is have Abby talk about the process that the local Public Safety Coordinating Council is about to launch. Abby, are you ready?
I am. Good morning, everybody. And I just threw a bunch of links in the chat cuz I'm gonna try to be succinct. And hopefully the order of the links will be one interesting and also applicable to what I'm gonna try to shrink down to just a few minutes. I apologize, my off-brand Roomba is bouncing off my, uh, office door, so if you hear some rattling, everything's fine. They're just cleaning up the dog fur. So, um, I have the, have the honor of being, uh, part of the Square One project, which I put as the first link. And that's really where some of these ideas started to be generated. It's also where I met Danielle Sarad, who gave an incredibly profound, uh, webinar about, um, healing, um, and, and restorative justice, so ways to really, um, improve how hope and healing, um, instead of putting people in cages. So there's a link to, to the webinar she did with us last week as well. But being able to be at these tables with Danielle, um, and other, um, real academics and researchers really talk about, um, big, huge concepts around abolition of policing and just incredibly real Square One ideas, um, not just tinkering around the edges of our local criminal legal systems, but really starting from square one. It was really hard for me to participate in at first because I'm a practitioner. And I wanted to be in these environments with other judges and sheriffs and law enforcement and, um, and mental health providers and figure out what are the things we can learn in these spaces and go back to our home jurisdictions and really create some meaningful change. So through that work, um, we held a conference over a year ago now, which is crazy to think about, the What Works in Public Safety event. Um, that's the second link in the chat there where we had a conversation and with most of you here on the call today, in addition to, um, all of the local Public Safety Coordinating Council, uh, Executive Committee. Um, and we also invited several Oregon legislatures, legislators with the intent of having the policymakers, budget makers, and lawmakers all have a conversation around what is the current legal system doing today? Does it work? And how should it be different? And really, by the end of the day, together, we all kind of had a, a collective aha, of course it should be different, right? It's expensive and our outcomes are terrible. What are we doing? If first do no harm, we really need to change the way we think about the future of justice policy. Um, and we need a North Star. We need a space that gives us direction. So no matter what initiative we're all involved in, we, perhaps all of our vehicles, boats, or whatever metaphor you wanna go with, are pointed at least in the same direction. And so what I wanted to figure out is, how do we create a common narrative? That we wanna shrink the criminal legal system footprint and kind of, um, unpack and, uh, release it from doing all of the things that it ends up doing because of the other safety nets that continue to be underfunded and under-resourced and continue to fail people? And acknowledging that systems fail people. So how do we engage a health leadership, behavioral health, housing systems, in really working together across sectors to create a different future and to think about that? I wanna make a comment here that, um, when, when there were questions from Commissioner Myron and Commissioner Hardisty around public health, public health is fully at the table here from HealthShare Oregon and the Health Department. It's fantastic partnership. But what we don't yet know is the breadth, depth, and scope of this project. It may have a focus on gun violence. It may not have a, we don't know yet because this is just. It may have a focus on gun violence. It may not have a, we don't know yet because this is just, just at the beginning. We've had two meetings so far. But what we've been able to do is engage in a contract with an organization that is our shepherd through this project, really helping us through visual thinking and design thinking of different ways to do your pretty typical strategic plan. I'm sure we all have lots of them beautifully bound and color printed and shiny on our, on our bookshelves that sit there and think, oh, yeah, that's a great thing to do, but we don't do the things. And so the organization that we contracted with through a competitive procurement process really has expertise in creating a human-centered process to be able to have better implementation and better follow-through. And the other real focus that I've been pushing is amplifying the voice of people who have direct lived experience in our systems, in addition to people who have experienced violence. So folks who have been victims of crime, who may or may not identify as a crime victim. And luckily, I think we're going to be able to really have some, some great engagement and sessions with folks to really bring a depth and breadth of perspective and narratives to this project. So the process has just really started. There is a core working group, which is folks kind of coming together right now, really doing that, that storming part of the forming, norming and performing that groups need to do. And down the road, we will also have a steering committee, which is all of the decision-makers and lever pullers to help us really unpack and move forward with this work. I think part of, because this has been a few years in the making, the landscape is really different today. The global pandemic, pandemic, really about gun violence and also the command and demands for racial justice have really shifted the conversation. We're continuing to plow forward even in a remote space, which is challenging, but also giving us lots of opportunity. And again, we'll, she'll figure out as we go. And the last, sorry, the third link down on the chat is a website we built out for the work. Every meeting is recorded. There will be notes and visuals to accompany that, to be completely transparent about how the work is going. The first two meetings will be posted hopefully this week. And looking at my notes, oh, this is, this is not, Judge Waller, one of my favorite things that you always says, we need a plan to lead, to lead all plans. What I'm hoping is that all of the local initiatives and effort just to make our systems more just are just aligned and communicating. And so there is no intention that this is the only focused thing, but it's really about aligning all of the things and ensuring some better coordination and some collaboration together.
Thank you very much, Abby. Greatly appreciate you sharing that information. And let me just say I'm excited to work with Chair Cefory on this transformation that we are headed into. It is a, it is a perfect time for us to be thinking about what should our criminal justice system look like in Multnomah County? Now I'm going to get Nike. Nike, I know I promised you 10 minutes, but I hope you can do it in five because I do want to make sure that we have a chance to talk about what else is coming up. Nike Green is the Director of our Office of Violence Prevention. Nike, take it away.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. And I just am honored that we are all here today because whether we declare it a crisis or not, the fact that the attention of every elected official is on this call and leaning in to actually pay attention intentionally and strategically speaks volumes about the care of our community and, and what we have been assigned to do to make sure that we put things into action. So I honor you with that. I step to the table with hope. I, I lean into hope. We are not starting from scratch. I need everyone to hear. We are not starting from zero. When I, when I walked into this office over a year ago, gently, the public health conversation had already begun. Aaron Fairchild and the county had already started talking about this, this public health approach. And, and so we're not, we, we do have some giants that we can stand on the shoulders of and then to continue in the work and then start figuring out how we do it collectively. So I want to encourage everyone that we're not starting from scratch and that we need you. And we need your lane and we need what you bring to the table. Last year, when we saw the uptick of violence, I also want you to know, our community has already declared this as a crisis. But they didn't wait for elected officials. They didn't wait for people like myself or anybody to do something. But our community, just like Baltimore, started to mobilize right away. And, and so that's the hope that I'm excited about today. We saw men building men start a We Are the Caution campaign and they were wearing yellow. They had the shirts on. They wanted to bring awareness to what was happening in the community and the impact that it was a part of. And many of you on this call actually were a part of that and you still have your shirt and you leaned in to bring in attention to the impact of gun violence on our communities. Black Men and Women United by Sam Thompson. They met at Willshire Park consistently throughout the summer, trying to figure out how do we do something different? How do we as community mobilize and address social determinants? So this isn't nothing new. We had individuals with lived experience show up and feed. And I'm talking about from formerly incarcerated to OGs to victims. They were the one taking food throughout the neighborhood. They showed up and made sure that children of incarcerated parents actually had presents and gifts. They were connecting individuals that were victims of violence to faith communities and county centers to make sure they had rental assistance, helping them fill out the applications for COVID relief. So our community is mobilized. I don't want anybody to think that our community is sitting back waiting on us. They're waiting on us to get our stuff together, but they're not waiting on us to be enacted. So I'm really, really excited about that. The biggest thing I will highlight so that you know, we believe definitely as the Office of Violence Prevention that we are in a crisis. We believe that violence is a virus. We believe it's preventable and treatable. Yes, we have programs that are going upstream and looking at root cause that are in the secondary prevention lane and making sure that we are helping those that are most impacted and looking at their, their individual, the family, the community level and the society level and addressing those simultaneously. We also are working with the county and, and understanding common behavioral therapy and understanding that mental health and trauma piece that is happening currently. And we also understand the tertiary prevention link, which is our Restoration Academy to lessen the effect and the impact long-term for violence. And so that's where we are having formerly incarcerated individuals that we just hired three interns to allow that pathway to careers, to family stability and for them to be re-entered into the community. So that is my quick, quick, but I want us to know, listen, we are not starting from scratch. We are in a crisis, whether it's deemed or not. And as long as we keep our finger on the pulse and we continue to listen to those most impacted, I guarantee you, be flexible. Relapse is a part of this, but if we stick to it, we will come out on top. Thank you, Commissioner Hardisty.
Thank you, Nike Green. As you can see, the passion that Nike brings to the work that she does. And let me just say that Nike, you're absolutely right. The community has been working on these issues since the summer when it, it, when the first spike was identified, right? And there are multitude of communities. There's no one community that is actually leading this effort. There are multitude of community groups and activities that are working at their level to address these issues. But what I hear clearly is they need us. They need us to actually have a plan that supports the work that is already taking place and new work that must happen. So I want to wrap this piece up by talking about some work that Mayor Wheeler and I are planning to, to do together as part of the city council's commitment to this effort. One is the mayor and I are going to do a blackmail town hall next month with black males between 14 and 44. The goal is to have those black men speak for themselves in this facilitated town hall meeting. And so that we hear directly from them what they need. Because as we know, whenever we enhance policing, that is the population that is most impacted by enhanced policing. So the mayor and I are looking forward to having that dialogue and having that dialogue inform many of our next steps. The other thing that I'm really excited about is the mayor has asked for a truth and reconciliation process. And as you may know, that is a huge lift to do a truth and reconciliation process. But I also think that it's vital for us to get to the next step, which is what, how are we going to create community safety? That process hasn't been funded yet. We're in the process of developing a proposal. We anticipate there will be a national contract with some certified smart people who've done this work in the past. And I am very grateful to Chief LaBelle, who's agreed to have the Portland Police Bureau participate in a process internally before we come out and have a process with the public. That's going to be vital to the success of this work. And so those are two initiatives. Mayor, is there something else that you'd like to add to this piece?
No, I appreciate it. That's, you, you've done a good job. Thank you.
And so what I'd like to ask at this point is for reflections on moving forward. I, Dr. Jay has been so gracious with his time and I promised him that these meetings wouldn't last for the rest of his life. And, and so I, I guess I want to do a temperature check. I have found all his presentations extremely helpful. But I also don't, we don't have to do this every couple of months if we don't need to. With the new work that will be happening with Lip Sync, with the work that Nike is leading at the Office of Violence Prevention and with the other work that's going on, I have, my question is, do we need to do another meeting like this? And if so, what would be most beneficial? Counselor Vincent, Vincent Jones Dixon, are you trying to unmute? No, okay. No ideas? Maybe we just overwhelmed you so much today with so much information. That's a hard question to answer at this moment. But I'll wait.
I'll, I'll speak up since no one else is. I, I think that, I think we have, I mean, a really great basis of things that have been happening in other parts of the country, things that are happening here. We obviously have the, the desire from everybody showing up to these meetings to really approach it. I feel like we have a good base now to start doing the work, you know, continuing the work that's been going on and, and really turn it into action. So I don't know that we need to do this, you know, as frequently, but I do think there is something to be said for reconvening this group maybe in a few months' time to do a check-in. Like, have we made achievements on this? You know, and one of the questions that came up for me around, like, the data, like, do we, like, for instance, do we feel like we have enough, have the data that we need to really have a picture of what's going on? If, I feel like we probably do, but, but we should, we should know that. And if there are people who are interested in engaging that work, like, that's definitely something we want to make sure somebody's taking on. Same thing with, you know, the work that, that Nike's leading and the community-based work that's happening, you know, making sure that, that, you know, I, I feel like there's a lot of things that we could do and I just want to take the, the, the foundation that's really been laid here and making sure that we're working strategically and, and focused on, on the next steps.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Ryan.
Yeah, thanks. Good morning. And Dr. Jay, it's good to hear from you again. I love the new slides that you provided today. I think what I've listened to this morning makes it really clear because it's repeated often. So I'm just repeating and paraphrasing and synthesizing perhaps, but we need to hear from the community organizations that are providing those promising practices. So we have those right here in Multnomah County. Nike Green was very passionate about reminding us of that. And then I do think we need to do some really good data sets and vastly improve those and invest some time and some money into that. And so those are the two things that just stick out for me very clearly. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate that. Commissioner, Counselor Jones Dixon.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Hardisty. And I was going to repeat the same exact thing that Commissioner Vega Peterson mentioned and Commissioner Ryan and even Commissioner Rubio, I think is extremely important as far as having those community-based organizations and hearing directly from them. We've been engaged in conversations with Latino Network, or I have, and hear about just how they've done their outreach and ERCO. And it would be extremely informative and helpful as we continue to figure out where funding goes and how collectively as a region, how we respond and support of those that are most in need and most impacted. So I fully support that. And then also I do support us coming together within the next three months just to do a check-in, just to continue, continue this work. So thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan, did you just have your hand still up?
Yeah, it's a bad habit, as you know.
No worries. Just checking. Didn't want to, didn't want to be ignoring you if you had an addition or question. So I think the only piece that is missing right now, and I think Commissioner Vega Peterson hit it right. I think the only piece that's miss, missing right now is having someone think about what are the data sets that we need to collect? And actually, what are the dashboards? What are the data sets that we need to collect so that we actually know what our baseline is, like where we're starting from? And who has that data? And, and how do we get it to the rest of us, right? For me, that's the only piece that's unclear. As I think about the work that Abby is about to start and the work that Nike is already involved in, it's the data piece that is missing, right? So who is the data folks? Who are the data folks that can help us actually think through what, what is it that we want to collect? And how do we make sure that collectively we're all getting the right data? Commissioner Maps.
On the data piece, which I agree, I think is one of the most important things we can do next, both in terms of getting a sense of where we're going or where we are and where we want to go. So I'm excited about this piece as the Commissioner in charge of Boick 911. We're in a unique position to provide some information about what our public safety system looks like. So I'm happy to volunteer my team to at least provide some information on the, the kinds of calls that are coming in. And I'll also point out, the Portland Police Bureau has a dashboard that specifically focuses in on shootings. So I think if we could meld the data I have over at 911 with the police bureau's data on shootings, we can get a long ways towards where we'd like to go.
Thank you for volunteering your team to work with us on that. Abby.
I just wanted to share for Commissioner Maps, Kyle Schwab, who works in my office, is already connected with the data folks at Boick and with the director there. And he's also connecting with the Sheriff's Office Research and Planning. So there's some work that's already happened there. The sheriff has already spearheaded. So happy to assist with the collaboration across departments and I can deploy Kyle to assist with that. Just let me.
Thank you so much. We'll look for Kyle.
Looks like we have a subcommittee in the works. I want to put Counselor Vince, Vincent Jones Dixon on the spot because Gresham is a part of Multnomah County. So we want to make sure that Gresham is also involved in this effort. Would you find out who in City Hall in Gresham, which should be part of this, this work group? That would be great. Is that okay?
Yes, counted on. I had a conversation with the mayor over the weekend about this specifically. So yes.
Commissioner Stegman, is your hand up again?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Hardisty. I wanted to point out, we've been doing work around economic mobility marginalization. And I think I put it up, I, I can put it up on the website. But if you go to my county website, we've already been working on data analysis with our GIS department. And these are just kind of the factors around, you know, what makes somebody successful. And you can dig down into like zip codes and neighborhoods. And based on this conversation, it's like, it'd be really great to have kind of those social determinants married with gun violence. So anyway, I've been working a lot on this. So I'm happy to work with Commissioner Mingus and Counselor Jones Dixon because we've already got a pretty good start. We are also looking at, we applied for a $100,000 grant with a National Association of Counties, again, to look at economic marginalization. And as we all know, you know, all of these things are foundational to having violence or not having violence. So anyway, I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you so much. I, I want to take this moment to really thank and appreciate Dr. Jonathan Jay for both his commitment to this issue and for his willingness to come and share his expertise with us. Thank you so much, Dr. Jay. We could not have gotten this far without you. I'm excited because what I'm hearing is that we have pretty much all the pieces we need in various areas of the city and the county. And what we need more is more coordination and more collaboration across our various jurisdictions. We are out of time. Who knew that this hour and a half would go so quickly? We are out of time, but I want to appreciate each of you for being here. And I want to let Commissioner Vega Peterson know that I will, in fact, probably next quarter, ask Dr. Jay if he would be kind enough to, to come back and talk to us. ask Dr. Jay if he would be kind enough to to come back and talk to us about the success that we're having in implementing our plan to reduce community violence in our community. Mayor, anything you want to say to close?
Excellent session. Thank you, Commissioner Hardisty. Thank you, Dr. Jay, once again for giving us good insight, good information. And I personally just want to say how much I appreciate hearing the national perspective on this as well. We spent a lot of time talking talking about the local dynamics. But we're not only bringing to bear changes here locally, we're obviously working within a larger national context. Thank you all for your participation. We're going to keep moving forward, and I know making good progress together. Thank you all. Have a good day. We are adjourned.
Bye bye.